We'll see it.
That's last.
Shouldn't be a long.
Is Kyle coming?
Kyle should be.
Okay.
All right, at 6:30, we'll call the Monday, October 10th, 2022 City Council meeting to order. If we could please start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight?
Yes, Mayor, I have two additions to add to the agenda. Under business item, as the first one, I'd like to introduce Katie from Minnesota, Southern Minnesota Valley Alliance, make sure I get that right, and she'd like to present a little information for us, a five-minute presentation. And then I would also like to add Mr. Mike Taylor in the audience. Last meeting, there was a discussion on his fence about allowing a two-foot setback, and a decision was that was made on that, however, there was there are some extenuating circumstance that weren't brought to council at the time. But I feel warrant reconsideration.
Anything else? So I'll look for approval of the motion or the agenda with the two additions.
Motion.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
A motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries five zero. With that, we can open to public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything not on the agenda, please come forward. And if you don't mind stating your name and address for the for the.
Yes, I am Kat Zimmerman, 1730 Juniper Knoll. I'm here on behalf of many people in mayor that would like us to consider permitting golf carts in mayor. I have 21 current signatures that are in support of this. In 2021, I purchased a golf cart after calling the city and asking if there were any restrictions or issues. If I were to buy one, the answer was no, so I went ahead with that purchase. I've spent the last year and a half driving my golf cart in the Hidden Creek Development with no issues until last week when I was stopped by a sheriff. This golf cart has allowed me to create so many memories with my kids from driving it to see the horses and cows on Tacoma Avenue, to getting ice cream treats from Casey's, to taking it to National Night Out two times, to trick-or-treating last year, or just cruising the neighborhood with my kids as they eat their bedtime snacks. Purchasing this golf cart was one of the best decisions I've made. As a parent, all we want is to be able to make our kids smile, make memories, and cherish the time we have with them. This golf cart has allowed me to do that during one of the biggest and most challenging years because of COVID. Permitting golf carts in mayor will allow me to continue to make these kind of memories, just like those that have side-by-sides I get to do. It also allow others in the neighborhood or in town to do the same with their kids. Golf carts can also create a sense of community and belonging because they allow people to stay connected to one another in a way that getting in a car may not allow. For example, my aunt and uncle just moved back to Minnesota from Utah. The kids and I will be, flies here, will be out for a cruise and just will stop and say hello, which isn't something that I would randomly do if I didn't have the golf cart. The side-by-side owners have built a community with their recreational vehicles. Why can't we do the same? We are the rising community after all. Just want to leave you with one last thing. As I mentioned, Mayor's Mado is the rising community, so shouldn't we rise above and give everyone a chance to participate in the recreational fun? Shouldn't we do things that bring our community together in fun and unique ways? This town, this community, has an opportunity to truly be the rising community by rising above the norm. So I ask that you please consider permitting golf carts in mayor, just like three other towns in Carver County do, Norwood, Victoria, and Chaska. Hamburg does allow golf carts, they just don't regulate it, so that would be four, as well as our neighboring towns of Howard Lake, Delano, Winstead, Lester Prairie, Minatrista, and give those that want golf carts the ability to get one. I'm asking that you just discuss this at the next City Hall, next City Council meeting on 10/24. If you'd like the data that I've been collecting, as well as the signatures, I'd be happy to drop those off at the City Hall by the end of the week. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Why don't you touch base and get the signature, get any data?
You want, I have 81 today that I can give you, but it's.
Either leave them if you want, or turn them in at the end of the week, just so we have them.
Sure, thank you.
Great, and thank you for your research and everything you've done. Yep. We will certainly consider it and have discussions.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. All right, anyone else for public comments? All right, hearing none, we'll close public comments. We'll move to consent. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Hearing none, I'll look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'm moved. Second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries five zero, and that will take us, Nick, to number nine, business item, consider approval of a resolution approving the amendment to the planning of the plan to rezone the old fire hall property.
Thank you.
Let me get over to that. Boring stuff. So you have a resolution before you as well as an ordinance change. Let's get down to a little bit more scale.
So the planning commission met last week on Tuesday evening to discuss the request because we're looking at selling the old fire hall, and it's currently zoned as a public and institutional. And in order for it to be used as a commercial purpose, we need to transition it from that public and institutional zoning classification to the recommended C2 central business district rezoning classification. So at the public hearing, we did hold a public hearing on the matter, as was required by law. There were no attendees and no comments made on it, and the recommendation out of the planning commission to the City Council is to approve, one, the resolution that you have before you, which would send it off to the Met Council for consideration, and then, two, which is item number 10, approving the ordinance change to our zoning code, which would officially redesignate the map and the district of this property. Any questions I can field on this?
My only question is, if we do this now, can you still use it for its current use until it's actually sold?
Yes.
Any other questions? I'll look for a motion to approve Resolution 2022-10-10-1.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign. Motion carries five zero. Number 10, consider approval of ordinance amend, amending chapter 152 on zoning to rezone the old fire hall property.
No additional comments on that, no.
Any other questions on the ordinance? I'll look for a motion to approve the ordinance number 235, Chapter 152 on zoning to rezone the old fire hall property.
I'll make that motion.
Second. A motion, a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries five zero. We will move to the consider approval for authorization to purchase a replacement tool cat for Public Works. I don't know if, Nick, you want to start out, or Kyle?
I'll start out. So in our capital improvement plan, we have this cool tool cat on a four-year rotation, and 2023 is actually the year when it would come up for rotation, but in talks with distributors on this piece of equipment, we're looking at quite the lengthy lead time before we would get this piece of equipment. So we're bringing it to council now for the purchase request so that we can get authorization to approve purchasing the equipment. One, start that process of getting the equipment. As you can see in the memo, the lead time is 10 to 12 months, so we're hoping to get it by October next year. So this just authorizes us to go ahead and place the purchase order. The purchase wouldn't occur until next year, and it would be lodged in next year's budget, as it's been budgeted for. So we are looking to authorize that purchase here tonight.
Add Kyle?
Nope, that's perfect.
Any questions? And as a side note, we did discuss this at Public Works, and the recommendation is to move forward with the purchase.
Well, I have one question.
Go ahead.
We, do we have like attachments, and so, and they'll fit on the new one?
Everything's universal between the tool cats.
Perfect.
I'll look for a motion to replace the city's 2019 tool cat for a cost of $12,000.
I'll make that motion. A second.
Got a second. Any further discussion? I assume if anything, if it's 10 months from now, that will this, could this fluctuate this trade-in a little bit based on hours for the next, or?
It's factored in with additional hours.
Oh, we did factor some in?
Yes.
Just mathematically?
Yeah, the dealer and the salesman already did that.
Okay, perfect, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries five zero. That will take us back to the discussion on the Drew property utility situation.
So my understanding where this left off at the last go-around, I'm not thinking the potential purchases here, but the request was for Bolton to come up with a figure of what that tie-in cost would be to the existing private line on the Drew property. We did get that to the property owners, and the cost was estimated at $10,000 for that sewer connection. And my understanding, it has been discussed in the past, but in the water ordinance that we have, I think it's Chapter 54 or 56, at the, some of the last part of it, it says that no private utility on the water side of things may be installed if there is a city utility within 1,000 feet, and I would estimate at most the blank Drew property would be at 500 feet away from that. So a consider, thing, a thing we would have to consider is also amending, potentially, if that was the route council wished to go, would be amending that ordinance as well to even allow it in the first place, so that could take a couple meetings as well to take care of. So we need to pick up that discussion on that Drew property and where we feel we want to go with it.
All right. Any discussion? So I, I think we're at a point, we have to make a decision. Are we, what are we going to start allowing? Are we going to allow a well in there, or are we not? Yeah. And at least give the property owner something to go on what's going on, or tying in. Said it's a $10,000 tie-in, and then we'll have to, it sounds like it probably makes best consideration to take over that line that was private to public, is that kind of the recommendation, Dave?
Yeah.
Do you have anything more to add at this point?
No, you know, I think, you know, we've, we've gone over a lot of different scenarios with this, you know. To Mr. Johnson's point, you know, the ordinance kind of says if you get one, you get both. If it's available, you should be hooking into it. You know, it's, you know, we've, we've talked about the challenges and the opportunities for getting some utilities down here, some of the public benefits to extending public utilities that exist for the system as a whole. So it's your call, but what I would say, in my opinion, is allowing a single connection for just the sewer doesn't do anything to advance our long-term goals from a utility standpoint.
Thank you.
My honest opinion is the same as last meeting, that I'm not ready to make a decision to continue to Band-Aid a problem until we find a better solution for the whole area in general, and I'm not interested in changing the ordinance for one property at this time. And the fact that changing it could open up more doors for things that would be, we don't see as an issue now by changing the ordinance to allow a well within city limits. So that's where I stand right now, is that I don't, I'm not interested in allowing wells.
Would you like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion, to not allow, is that a well? Or not to change the current ordinance to allow a well.
Will that include any, will that include a sewer, tying into sewer, or should we do that separate? Would you rather do that separately? Do you want to combine them, or do you not feel the same with sewer?
Well, I, I mean, I would say it's all combined because you can't just have a sewer connection and no water to a property. So I would think that you have to have both in order to have a successful lot.
All right, we have a motion to not amend our code and not allow a well or sewer connection on the proposed property. Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign. Motion carries five zero.
So can we now discuss the potential of possibly purchasing the property as a city for public use?
The way it's on the agenda, Nick, do you see room for that, or, I mean, we're
You like to workshop?
The utility situation, so we might have to move that to a workshop.
Okay, we can do it at the next council meeting as a workshop.
Yeah, yeah.
Item.
I think that expands too much just from what our.
Right, 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 I just.
Otherwise, I would try to get it in there, but so we'll have to wait. Nick, if you have any question, Nick Drew, if you have any questions, you and Nick can talk. Okay. Ty, contact him with anything that. Well, but it's not that, a well, a well will not be allowed. That's a decision that's been made, and tying into the sewer, that's. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So Nick Johnson will be in touch, will be in touch, thank you. All right, with that, then, we can move to the added agenda item of 13 for the Southern Minnesota Valley Alliance.
Southern Valley Alliance, yeah.
I was writing too fast.
That's totally fine.
I had Minnesota too, just for the record.
Let me get some of this up for you too as well.
And if you don't mind us introducing yourself for the record.
I am Katie Schauerman. I'm the Community Engagement Coordinator for Southern Valley Alliance. We provide all of the domestic violence services for Carver and Scott counties, so I'm just here to share a little bit of an update about what we've done over the past year and share some exciting news for the future. So thank you all so much, Mayor and Council, for squeezing me in tonight, really appreciate it. So like I mentioned, we are a nonprofit, we provide those domestic violence services. We are a prevention and solution-focused organization that focuses on partnering with other community agencies and businesses to make the communities of Carver and Scott counties a better, safer place to live. I'm honored to be with you tonight to share more about our organization, and specifically Domestic Violence Awareness Month, as October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So typically during the month of October, we try and come and give a little bit of an update to all of the city councils for the cities that we represent in our community, just so you have a better under, understanding of what we do and what's happening within our community. Some super exciting news is our organization is celebrating our 40th anniversary this year. We've been serving the communities of Carver and Scott counties since 1982, so a really awesome time for us to just continue to create that awareness and inform the community about what we do and ways that we can break the cycle of violence in our own backyard. Some very kind of jarring statistics. One in three women and one in four men in the United States have experienced some form of abuse in their relationship. In Minnesota specifically, more than 65,000 adults receive domestic violence services from organizations like ours every year. And one in three people under the age of 18 have been physically harmed by somebody that they're in a dating relationship with. This is what we're trying to prevent from happening within our community. We'd like to think it doesn't happen, but the truth is, is that domestic violence can happen anywhere, anytime. I've given council our 2122 annual report. This shows that we served 945 individuals and answered over 1,800 crisis line calls last year. And we launched two brand-new programs to help better serve the community. So we launched a lethality assessment program, which is partnering with all 10 law enforcement agencies across Carver and Scott counties. And then we also launched a new pilot program with St. Francis Hospital in Shakopee doing hospital advocacy. This is something, after this pilot program is complete with St. Francis, we're hoping to get this into the Rigi medical systems as well, so we can better serve individuals that go to a hospital due to domestic violence injuries. And lastly, we were able to provide specific trainings to over 2,700 individuals within our community, either on healthy relationships or various domestic violence topics. Since our organization began, we have assisted 141 individuals in the city of mayor alone. Our organization works to break that cycle by providing essential services like our 24-hour free and confidential crisis line. This is available for anyone to call, whether you are experiencing abuse, maybe questioning unhealthy aspects of your relationship, or a concerned family member or friend, we're always there to answer questions. Crisis intervention and court advocacy, safe housing partnerships, as there is no domestic violence shelter in Carver or Scott counties. It's a big barrier we see as an organization, but we have ways that we can kind of bridge that gap by providing emergency hotel stays. And we also partner with Minnesota Day One, which is a network of all of the agencies across the state. We can call and know which agencies have beds available, how many, and provide transportation. And then we also offer support groups and community education, like I mentioned. So I go into schools, faith communities, law enforcement, healthcare providers, city officials to do in-depth trainings on what domestic violence is, what are those warning signs, so we can all be working together to prevent it. Some super exciting news, we have purchased a brand-new property in Shakopee, and we're moving our office location from Belle Plaine to Shakopee to be more central between the two counties that we serve. Being in Belle Plaine has been awesome for the last 40 years, but it comes with some challenges. We have no public transportation. Uber and Lyft don't come down to Belle Plaine, so we really want to be more centralized that offers more accessibility to survivors to get to us, accessibility to public transportation and Uber and Lyft. But also, our new office location is directly across the street from the Scott County Government Center, so it'll shorten travel time for our advocates going to court hearings and only be 10 minutes from the Carver County Court System. So saving our advocates so much more time to be meeting with individuals that need our services and being closer to other partnered agencies as well. So we are just so grateful for the opportunity to come and share a little bit more about what we do. We'd love to continue to partner and talk more about ways that we can change our community for the better. But just thank you so much. We greatly appreciate your support and are so honored to serve your community.
Any questions for Katie? So you had mentioned there aren't shelters in these counties. Are you, have you been advocating with the counties at the commissioner level?
So, so many conversations are being had, and I am not the person who has those conversations, it's our executive director. But there are conversations being had. I don't know where all of that is at. There are so many things that have to come into consideration when we're thinking about a shelter. There is millions and millions of dollars that we're talking about, who's going to run it, where is it going to be? So there's just so many hoops that we all have to kind of go through, but work together as a community to make happen. So we're doing what we can to kind of bridge that gap the best that we can in the interim, and have been doing it for the last 40 years, but definitely see that need growing, and not only our organization, but any organization that is working with housing, it is just across the board a struggle right now.
My understanding with domestic, domestic violence, it was kind of upticking and trending upwards with the lockdown and COVID.
Yeah.
And some of that, are, are you seeing it start to come back down now, or is it still, where the trends go?
Yeah, so, that's a great comment. Yes, throughout the pandemic, we saw nationally a 9% increase in all domestic violence agencies, and we've stayed at that level. We haven't come down yet. And we don't know why we haven't come down yet, but we're staying very busy and very fortunate that our doors were able to remain open throughout the entire pandemic. And we're still seeing that the shelters that we do have in the state of Minnesota are very full. So it's even a challenge for us to find spaces in the state of Minnesota throughout the pandemic. We were looking a few different places, neighboring states, that might have had some beds available. So definitely something that we're still feeling here.
Through the pandemic, did you see an uptick in male victims?
Yes, and I would say even beyond, like before the pandemic, as we have started to learn more, we, meaning domestic violence agencies as a whole, as we have begun to learn more about domestic violence, this is a humans, human or public issue that's pretty still in its infancy, like this came to the public eye 45, 50 years ago. So we're still learning a lot about what domestic violence is, and historically has always been thought of as something that only women experience. But that's just not the case. Anyone, anytime can experience abuse. And even prior to the pandemic, we were starting to see more people who identify as male come forward and ask for services. And so that's why, in the middle of the pandemic, we decided to change our name from Southern Valley Alliance for Battered Women to Southern Valley Alliance, recognizing that anyone can experience abuse, having our doors open for all. And we also wanted to raise awareness that physical battery wasn't the only form of abuse. So that's why we kind of did our big name change and rebrand in 2020.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for everything in the organization, that's great, and I appreciate you coming in.
Yes, thank you all so much. Did you get it?
No.
Thanks, Katie.
Yes, thank you.
All right, with that, we'll move to the other added agenda item. Mike Taylor, if you want to come to the podium, introduce yourself and your address, please.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me this time. My name is Mike Taylor, Level 1.
Hi, good evening, thank you for allowing me this time, my name is Mike Taylor, I live at 109 West Ridge Road, it's right over there on, in the old neighborhood, I guess we'll call it. My family and I moved here in August of 2000, and when we did, our, our yard had zero trees on it, and any trees you see in my yard now are something my family and I planted, and in the backyard, there are approximately seven trees that are real close to the property line. When we moved in back then, that was back when the beautiful park that you see now was just a field with about chest-high grass, Chad can attest to that, and about two, three times a summer, the farmer would come in and mow it down and bale it, there was a plethora of garter snakes that would make it into your home and garage, and there was also a weed problem, so my neighbor and I, we'd always mow about 12 feet into the park, just to kind of provide that buffer of the weeds into our yard, and maybe the snakes give them a little more, let, let us see them before they got in our yard by our kids, but I digress. We first moved into town, in order to provide, since it takes almost a lifetime for a tree to grow, my kids and I planted a number of trees in our backyard, and like I said, a number of them are along near what we've known now is the property line between the park and our property. When I, we wanted to put up a fence in our backyard, and we, I already have verbal approval from my two neighbors on either side to put it on the property line, we're just, I learned now, we do have a, a notary, two notaries that we can rely upon, so we can schedule that to be done and have that form completed. I understand that the last meeting was voted upon to not allow us to put the fence on our property line with the park, and I was told by Luanne that it was requested that the fence move two feet approximately back into my property. We're good citizens, we take care of our property, we mow our lawn, we trim our weeds, anything, we were not going to allow anything to grow into the fence, if need be, we'll go and continue to mow the four feet into the park, into the property to make it look nice from a distance, but the thing, moving it back two feet into my yard will probably cause us to remove approximately seven trees, because they're that close to the property line, we wanted a nice barrier, a nice buffer between the, the sharp lights from the gas station and the car wash and the noise coming from the highway, and by moving it two feet back, we'd have to remove those trees, and that's, you know, as I say, it takes a lifetime to grow a tree, and most of them are pretty mature right now, so it would be a significant loss to us. So I'm not sure why it was voted down, but I'm, I'm asking you, my request today is asking to reconsider, so we don't have to remove all those trees, and just know that I'm a good steward with what I have, there won't be any weeds growing into the fence, I'll make sure that everything is neat and trimmed, that was my promise to my neighbors too, is just, you know, don't worry, it'll be taken care of, that's my responsibility as the fence owner. Anybody have any questions at all?
It's my understanding that the, the tree condition back there wasn't an item that was brought up at the last council meeting, I guess from a staff perspective, I wouldn't want to see seven of my trees cut down just for two feet, just to have it on the property line, and from the city perspective, we'll be able to manage with a fence on our property line bordering with a park, I don't see an issue from that from the staff side, can I see Kyle shaking his head?
You still think that from last? Yeah, I know you commented on that last meeting, but I just wanted to reconfirm, okay. All right, thanks for adding that, Nick.
Can we re, can we, can we reboot then?
So with that, yep, so with that, what, well, and again, just so people understand, some, there was just a little disconnect when Mike had called Luanne to get on this agenda, that's why we, we added it, otherwise we would have had this information, there was a disconnect on there.
Yeah, I apologize, it was, she called me with the results.
It just happens, but.
And she said, my only recourse is to address you at this meeting, she said, I'll get you on the agenda, and that's, I just showed up.
If people need more information or want to get more, I did talk to Mike, and he feels that if we still go to the next meeting, it might still fit his schedule, or if we, I'll entertain a motion today if someone wants to.
Well, I'll make a motion to allow, or.
Allow the fence.
Allow the fence to be on the property line of the city.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
So is this a variance from our ordinance? So anybody can put a fence on a property line?
Well, it's okay.
With the approval.
Agreement of the neighbors, yes.
With the approval from every neighbor.
Just, we're one of the neighbors.
Yep.
So that's why we have to.
Because we're one of the neighbors. On Ninth Street, when they put it on the property line, what do they have to ask to do that? That street, the house right across from it, that doesn't mow it.
They got a, do they get a permit? I don't know, I don't take care of the permits.
I don't know.
Anyway.
That would be a question. People put up fences without the proper procedure.
Well, that was my concern, I mean, like, I see it every day, and if I went to that particular park and say Mike moves, sells his house, then who's going to be responsible to weed whack that side of the fence?
I think technically, no matter what, it's ours, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, technically, it's ours, and if they do it, unless I'm wrong, but I believe we would have to do it, because it's on the property line, so we would do our side, he would do his side, now, if he's doing all three sides as a courtesy, great, but if he moves and someone else's side too, and Kyle's indicated, he has no problem weed whipping through there.
And this is just a chain link fence, is that correct?
It's a black chain link fence, my wife and I haven't quite agreed upon if it's going to be four feet or five feet high, that's still, but it'll be one or the other, it'll be installed by shed and fence, I think they're on the same boundary.
Does she prefer?
She likes the four.
So that's what it'll be.
So that's what.
Sorry.
That's all right, hey, we all know.
Throw that in the motion too, just.
That's all on public record.
All right, any other, any other discussion? We have a motion and a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, motion carries five zero.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you for the additional information.
And sorry for the little snap, I'm not getting you on the agenda. So with that, we'll move to council reports, council member Lender, anything to report on?
Don't, we did it at the planning commission.
Council member Wagner.
I have nothing.
Council member McNeely.
Nope.
Council member Halt.
Nope, Park Board Committee, and music in the park went well.
Good, good.
Seemed like a decent turnout, I'd say there was about 100 for our first try. But I think once the new pavilion and things are in, will, you know, it can be more focused, and it was kind of.
And reminder signs, if, if it's put some up, so like, oh, today is the day.
Right.
Yeah, okay, and then I had Public Works meeting, and Nick commented on it in his weekly report about, as we're still working through where to put Ridgeview and the sheriff's department, we ran into some other things with the expansion on the building, so we're trying to, we don't have a good recommendation yet to bring the council, so we're going to be meeting again, but like you said in his report, we have met with Brad Quas to see if he has some flexibility, which he does, so more to come on that as we get better recommendations solidified. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post same sign, we are adjourned.
Perfect.
Good timing.
Who's was that, that was perfect.
Couldn't make that up.
All right, so who wants to go first? They got a taco, I'm kidding.